I don't either.
Chris thinks she's washing out for you, Don.
Thanks, Jamie.
Ed, you're gonna miss it, aren't you?
Huh?
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order again the Harwich Board of Selectments meeting for May 17th, 2021. We did, in fact, open the meeting at 5:30 and then motion into executive session to discuss collective bargaining for all town, the strategy with collective bargaining for all town unions. If an open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, and the chair so declares. We had a good hour discussion and look forward to working with the union on the upcoming contracts. We went out of open session about five minutes ago, so about 6:35, and now back into open session. I'd ask you to invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go next. Joe, will you start us off on the COVID-19 updates?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good evening to you and the members of the board. So this is, I think, one of many dates that will be perhaps remembered for quite some time. Of course, I'm making reference to the actions, or I should say more of the announcements made by Governor Baker today as it relates to COVID-19. In a moment, we're going to hear from our Public Health Director, Dr. Katie O'Neil, who can perhaps go into more detail than I. But I asked to start out this evening because I'd like to inform the board first and then generally employees and general public, secondly. But given the announcement today by Governor Baker that many industry restrictions will be lifted as of May 29th, and recognizing that the governor will declare the pandemic state of emergency to be dissolved as of June 15th, first, I want to put out there, it's my recommendation to the board that based on those dates and recognizing that we have an employee vaccination clinic set to occur on May 26th, so there are a number of employees that have already availed themselves of that, for many of those employees, that would be their second vaccination. And so for that reason, I would ask that we recognize and look to reopen town buildings as of June 15th. The reason, the rationale for that is that, in addition to many things, that employee vaccine clinic will allow many of our employees that haven't been vaccinated to finalize their vaccination process and including the additional 15 days, as has always been the recommendation. And then as I contemplated that today, it's not lost on me, that would be, I think, almost 15 months to the day, if memory serves correctly. Friday, March 13th, 2020 was the day that I announced that we would have to close buildings effective immediately. And so it's just remarkable to me that we have gone this long, but now a little bit unnerving, to be honest with you, that we're looking to come back in the manner that we are. But if the board's agreeable to that, I will then, you know, broadcast widely that we would be looking to reopen town buildings effective on June 15th. And then what that would mean for this board also is that we could expect to resume your regular meetings as you knew them prior to March of 2020 at your meeting on June 21st. And also, I think, for Dr. O'Neil's benefit, it may mean that we no longer have to dedicate time to the COVID-19 weekly briefing, but rather we do that as needs arise. So again, certainly a momentous day in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts today and many, many things on the horizon. But again, if I could get a sense of the board, if that schedule is agreeable to you all, I'd like to be able to work with our department heads and employees to make that understood.
Questions, comments?
I'm good with that.
Everyone good with that, Don?
Yep.
Ed?
Thank you. So then, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it over to our probably exhausted but still very capable Director of Public Health, Dr. Katie O'Neil.
We're still smiling.
Always.
Hi, everyone. So, sorry, Jamie, there's some feedback. Perfect. Okay, I got it. Thank you. So as Joe mentioned, more good news tonight. We like delivering good news. Governor Baker made some pretty substantial announcements today. Massachusetts is on track to meet its vaccination goal, and as a result of that, all of the remaining COVID-19 restrictions will be lifted on May 29th. So this includes the face covering requirement, capacity restrictions, and any sector-specific protocols, with the exception of certain industries such as transportation and healthcare. And like Joe said, the state of emergency is projected to end on June 15th. Well, no more details in the coming days. Like most of the big announcements, the announcement is made and then details are provided at a later date. So we still don't really entirely know if there are any transitional provisions or how long some of the current modifications will be allowed. We have a statewide call tomorrow afternoon with the Department of Public Health, so I'm hoping there'll be some additional clarification and information at that time. But things are certainly looking good in our return to normalcy. Harwich has officially been moved back into the green designation to, with a positivity rate of 1.5%. We are currently following only two active cases right now, which is really great news. And the last thing I'll mention tonight is that the Board of Health will be meeting remotely this Friday at 10:00 a.m. to discuss and vote on their current mask mandate along 28th and Harwich Port. So all in all, we're getting there. Does the board have any questions for me this evening?
Any questions?
Joe? Mr. Chairman, not a question, but I, and I apologize, Katie, I was distracted by my phone, but did you make reference to ABCC, knowing that that was on my to-do list?
So we don't know where we stand with any of the restaurant changes or the expansion for the outdoor liquor license. So we're hoping that's one of the questions that will be answered, hopefully this week.
And so, thank you, Katie. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could, I want to emphasize that point. We are, we will be relying upon ABCC guidance in relation to Governor Baker's orders. And so for our licensed establishments, we'll keep them informed as much as we can. They should always rely upon the ABCC guidance if they get that first. And I bring that up because this evening, we're going to be talking about a contemplated meeting with licensees that, quite frankly, all of that changed based on the governor's announcements today. So I'll be talking more about that later in your agenda, but I would just urge everybody to understand that we're in a waiting pattern to hear guidance from the state as it relates to restaurants and service of alcohol.
To be concise, that affects the COVID-19 outdoor seating that was allowed.
It certainly impacts it to some degree. We don't know when.
It may revert back to inside.
Correct.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, have they, is that June 15th date actually withdrawal of the state of emergency or just a change in the level of enforcement of what they're having closed and open?
So if I could take it first and then certainly relate to Dr. O'Neil, we watched the press conference essentially together. My understanding is that the governor is declaring that the state of emergency is over, if you will, as of June 15th. The reason why that's significant is, as you may recall, and some of them relate to ABCC orders, there were orders that he promulgated that are end of emergency plus 60 days. So I've taken that to mean that June 15th is that end of emergency. We will seek further information on orders that were post-emergency, stale-dated.
And that's why I bring it up, because ultimately, every single license that we granted, giving them the extra ability to dine outside or pour outside, was conditioned with the same exact thought, that it was 60 days after the expiration that everything would change. One thing I'm interested in is whether that would be an automatic something or other, or we have to actually make an affirmative move to continue to allow something.
Sure. And these are why I want to emphasize that the town is waiting for and will rely upon guidance from the various state agencies. And certainly will come back to this board first to advise you before you would need to take any actions as the local licensing authority.
Okay. Thank you. Katie, additional comments?
Nope, Joe. Cut on.
Okay. Thank you. We'll, we'll move to...
Certainly, I think it might be an appropriate segue now to reach out to our Director of the Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, Cindy.
Good evening. I actually was writing all my notes because I also watched the press conference today and took a deep breath. All great news. Waiting to hear what happens over the next few days because it does affect a lot of things still. But some great news here, after talking with Katie and Amy Bullock, we will be opening up the Visitor Center on Friday of Memorial Day weekend. It will then officially be open seven days a week. And I confirmed with Amy today that I will be selling beach stickers and transfer access to both residents and visitors, and that will start June 1st through Labor Day. So we have the stickers here already, super excited, and just can't wait to welcome everybody back in and see everybody excited to share in all that Harwich offers. That's all for tonight.
Any comments, questions for Cindy? If not, I'll move to public comment and announcements. Amy, I see, I can see your picture on the screen, so you wish to start.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick announcements for the people of Harwich. The first is that our first nest of piping clovers is due to hatch this week at Red River Beach, and that is our only pair that we have at Red River Beach this year thus far. Technically, more birds could still arrive, but it is getting a little late for their arrival there. So we are hopeful in the Conservation Department that if these birds hatch within, it should be within the next week, that they will have fledged or flown in advance of 4th of July. And I say that because people will also notice that today, the Highway Department assisted us in putting up Jersey barriers on the east end, kind of the eastern third of the parking lot at Red River Beach, as they have in previous years. This is a requirement that was set by the state and to keep vehicles essentially a distance away from the nest and the chicks because our parking area is so close to our nests. That was a mandate that kind of came down a couple of years ago. So we've been doing that ever since and trying to keep cars away from clover chicks, and that way we're able still to keep the majority of Red River Beach parking lot open. But we are very hopeful that this year, by the 4th of July, that the birds will be flying and we can remove those barriers. We did put up a sign today right by the barriers, alerting people to what they are. Most people who, you know, who are local and walk there all the time do know what they are, but we are, we are starting to get visitors, and we want to make sure everybody is informed as to what's going on. That's all for that topic. Is there any questions for that? And then I have one other quick announcement for you.
And Amy, you're required to monitor the nests daily?
So we did hire a gentleman this year, and so thanks for letting me do that. And he, we are required daily or every other day, once the chicks are born, which should be in the next few days, whenever we put a rake on the beach, we're required to have a monitor there. So that's very early in the morning, 5:00 a.m. to about 8:00 a.m. in the morning. We also have several pairs in the Bank Street vicinity. Those are not set to hatch until, at earliest, another week or two. And it's kind of staggered throughout May and June that those are due to hatch. So unfortunately, those probably will still be not flying around the 4th of July weekend, but the good thing about Bank Street is we don't have a parking lot that we need to close down. But yes, we have a monitor, and they're working part-time. They report to us every day or daily in some instances, and we're excited to have them on staff.
Thank you. Is that it?
Well, I have one other note, just thing of note, if I may. We have been noticing, and we, I mean, a couple of residences have made it known to myself, Heinz Proft, our Natural Resource Director, and the Board of Health Department, that we've seen a little bit of an algae bloom starting over at Sand Pond. And when I say a little bit, it's really just a maybe two to three-foot-wide strip right along the south shore, like the Great Western side of Sand Pond. It does not cover the entire pond. It is a thin strip. We check it once or twice daily. I did take a sample of it today. It is the blue-green algae. It has, it potentially could be the kind that we don't like, but it's not in the concentrations, I don't believe, that it is a hazard at this point. If it starts to cover more area, we will certainly involve the county and the state in looking into that further. We're also ready to put up advisories should that need to be the case, but we don't believe that it needs to be the case as of right now. And that is in chatting with the Health Director, with the Natural Resource Director, and myself. So, and actually, usually by the afternoons, it dissipates. It was completely clear this afternoon. It seems to be an early morning phenomenon.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to make you all aware of it.
Thank you, Amy. Ed, you have a follow-up?
Amy, I know APC, APCC, is it, Association to Protect Cape Cod, are doing pond sampling for the algae bloom issue, a number of ponds throughout Cape Cod. Have we contacted them to do sampling in Harwich?
We have not contacted them yet. I'd be happy to. From what I understand, they were starting to charge fees for that, and also they, they, sorry, excuse me. They were starting to charge some fees, which if the Board of Selectment wants me to work with administration to figure out if that's something we want to look into, we can. I can certainly make a preemptive call and see if they'd be willing to come out and look. But like I said, it's my understanding that they were starting to charge and that they are not necessarily recognized by the state as being an entity that we should rely on 100%, put it that way, for these results.
I don't know about that. I do know that the county is starting to contract with them to do their sampling.
That's good to know.
So.
That's good to know. I'd be happy to reach out and see if they would pay us a courtesy and to take a look out there.
Okay.
As long as there's no charge while you're watching it. It's extreme, possibly, but...
We have, you know, over the past few years, we have gotten an indication of when those extreme...
We lost you, Amy.
Sorry about that. We will definitely keep an eye on it, and in the event that there's even a question of whether or not it should be posted for an advisory or a potential closure, we will do so and contact somebody who can do a more definitive sample.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Anything else?
Thanks.
Moving on to public comment.
Thank you.
Let me, Robin, you have a comment?
I'll try to keep it pretty brief. So we have three different events that are coming up at the arboretum property. So it's the James G. Marseline Arboretum Grand Opening Friday, May 21st. It's from 10 to 2:00. And in this event, we partner with the AmeriCorps of Cape Cod. So first, I want to thank everyone that's helped us get to this point. So of course, Amy, who's still on, Conservation Administrator, AmeriCorps Cape Cod, the DPW who has planted new trees for me at the entrance, and also installed water spigots, saving us a ton of money by not going out to bid that out. So that was a huge thank you link. We have local artists who have sketched the leaves, Rod Tree Tags, the Harwich Garden Club members who have assisted us, Russ Norton from the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, and both the Cemetery and Conservation Commission for assisting us with this. So on the first event, we'll be just talking about the development of the arboretum, showing where the invasive species was removed and will continue to be removed. We have new gardens going in. One of the new gardens that's going in in the back is a native species garden, which is going to be at the top of Cross Road Extension, and it's behind the Stephen Ford and Link Thatcher lot. It's quite a large area that me and Amy are working on choosing different natives to go in there. The Thatchers were very excited about this garden when they chose the lot up there, as well as Marcy Ford has worked on the design. So that is the event. That's Friday, May 21st. Our second event is our Third Annual Tree Tour, which is Wednesday, June 9th. It's from 11:00 to 1:00. And on this one, we partner with the Garden Club members of Harwich, and they will be giving and assisting us as docents or giving tours and bringing people to the different areas, describing the trees. We have the scientific name, the common name. We have leaves that have been drawn by local artists that are amazing. I can't believe how many of them have reached out to me. And then the final event that we'll be having later on this summer, and I've talked to Cindy at the Chamber about this as well, and also with the artists over in the town. So we're partnering with local artists, and it's going to be called Arts in the Arboretum. It's going to be at the end of July. It's going to be the week of the 26th through the 31st. We haven't picked a date yet, but some of the local artists who helped us with the sketching of the leaves are going to be featured and place over the 25-acre parcel, and they'll either be drawing, painting, whatever they want to be doing in the different locations, and people will just be walking around and visiting and enjoying the beautiful scenery as well as the local artists. So if anyone has any questions, I would love to answer them, and if not, thank you for your time.
Questions? You're busy, Robin. That's great.
It's a lot of work. We want to show it off.
We'll be anxious to see it. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I did get a request from Lain Meehan to speak under public comment.
Okay. Let me, let me start that. Before I call on you, Lain, let me ask Ed for an update, if you will, Harwich Center.
Sure. The Sherrett Streets Project, which is funded by a grant from the Department of Transportation, started this today, where the first phase of it is the putting in the handicap ramps at the end of each of the crosswalks in Harwich Center. The only crosswalk that isn't getting a new handicap ramp is the one crossing from the corner at the Park, Exchange Park, over to the church, and the reason is when you get over to the church side, there's no sidewalk to end it on. So that's being left as is, but all the other sidewalks will be, the handicap ramps will be put in. And that started today, and they have several of the ramps poured and finished. They'll do several more tomorrow and finish up on Wednesday. As the plan is now, after that, the next step will be to do the re-marking of the lanes, on the traffic lanes, which will start with the removal of the parking on the north side of the, parking spaces on the north side of the street, and then moving the center lane closer to that way, to that side. And that will allow for both lanes to be wider than the narrow lanes they are now. I think we've all, over time, experienced the panic of having a big truck coming the other way and big vehicles parked on either side. And I know for myself, I've both lost a rearview mirror and taken off a rearview mirror along that stretch, so hopefully that will be eliminated. But it'll also give a greater comfort for the people that are parked on the south side to be able to exit their vehicles with a little more elbow room. After that would come the moving in of the flower planters, both on the north side, to dress up the district, and then also, as it stands now, on the south side. However, I'm saying that as we heard from Katie O'Neil, that we're in sort of a point where we're not sure what the rules are going to be in a couple of days until we get final guidance for it. If the regulations go away in the middle of August, it would indicate that we'd be looking at not, having created outdoor dining areas that could no longer be used. So we need to find out what the governor's guidance needs means and how that will affect the project. It could affect it in a number of ways. We may, but that, I think, will have to be held with a discussion of the stakeholders at that point to decide how to handle that. I think, you know, one of the features that were planned for the center, which I think could go ahead either way, would be the setting up of a bicycle parking area in the street. We have, I know last summer, the amount of folks that came in to visit Harwich Center to get supplies at the market and eat at the Ruggies and the Seal was substantial. And you'd drive by on days, and the front lawn of the rectory would be just littered with bicycles. It would be nice to have a more formalized place for those people, those to pick. But those, that, I think we need to stay on top of that. We've contracted for both the handicap ramps, and we're under contract for the street striping, restriping that will be starting up, I believe, next Monday, although they may be doing some work at the end of this week. And we also are, are waiting, if not having received, the planters and the barricades that will come in. One of the things that this will allow for is, in the center of the street, to be able to widen the yellow line, to be able to be able to put those signs at the crosswalk that indicate, you know, to stop for crossing pedestrians. They've tried that at a couple of locations, but given the narrowness, they tend to get taken down a lot. With a little bit more room, they can, I think, will have some chance of staying up for a good period of time. And we all know that the use of the barrels to mount those signs, they tend to get bounced off to the side of the road quite quickly. But I think, you know, we will be able to calm down the traffic and provide for a safer pedestrian environment, more conducive to coming and visiting and doing activities in the center. I think, you know, as this whole project has occurred, one of the... I think, you know, as this whole project has occurred, one of the, it's become quite contentious, and, you know, I'd like to just set the record straight on one issue which hit social media today. I am not, nor have I ever been employed by or a contractor of the SEAL restaurant. My association with them is simply because they are the closest local coffee shop to where I live, and I do enjoy a good cup of coffee or espresso in the morning. I have volunteered with them to train some of their new employees on how to use their espresso machine, because it's the same type of machine that my wife and I had in our cafe in California, so I know it well. And it's an expensive piece of equipment, and there isn't a whole lot of training opportunities on that equipment on Cape Cod, nor is there actually any good repair service on Cape Cod for espresso machines. So it's important that they do it right.
Thank you, Ed. Lane?
Don?
Before Lane, if you'll excuse me, just a further question. When last we left, I was under the impression that there was no loss of permanent parking. There was no permanent loss of it. Is that changed now?
With the plan that is now, there is one, there'll be one less, some of the parking spaces will be moved around from the north side of the street to the south side of the street to allow for the lane widens, but it will go further, be able to then go down further down the street in front of the dentist, the market, the house down to the gas station at the end. With that addition of parking, if the plan stays as it is currently laid out, there'd be a loss of one parking space. If any changes that are made in the use of the parking area for the shared seating, it'll be the exact same or actually a net gain of parking.
I just thought, and I've expressed this to Larry, that if we were making any permanent changes, we probably should have had a lot more input from the area. And I was given to understand that this was temporary in nature. If it's not, I mean, if I'm the Meehans and I've got tiles to carry out the stuff, it's no great solace that now you've got to walk down east a lot further with a box of tiles.
Well, the plan as it has now retains the parking spaces in front of their property.
What he's trying to tell you, excuse me, is you're eliminating.
Lane, let him answer, then I'll give you a full chance to comment.
The plan that, as it is now, retains the parking spaces in front of the tile shop and the, and Ruggies. And it's not permanent. It's paint on the sidewalk. If it doesn't work out at the end of season, it can be redone.
Lane? Are you still?
Yes, no, I'm here. And what I'd like to comment is, I don't agree with you because you're eliminating all of the parking across the street from me, all of it. And Odell's has a substantial amount of clientele who are mature. Where do you expect that they're going to park and get to her store? Are they either going to come across Main Street, which you just said was, you know, busy, or are they walking from Town Hall, which is very unrealistic? And what, if you really look at the plans, which it's interesting because there are some discrepancies from one set to another, you have eliminated the parking in front of the church, the parish hall, all the way across from me, in front of the SEAL. And so what you're telling me is that I design aging-in-place, mature handicap bathrooms all day long, but you'd like me to have those people try to bring tile down? If you repaint the sidewalk, the line in the middle of the street, and you repaint all these street lines, when you come to grips with the fact that this was a mistake, at whose expense is it going to be to repave the road and repaint all of those lines? The other part that you've left out is that the SEAL is planning on putting a deck that will be at the curb height for seating in the street with these barriers. So the first impression of Harwich Center, or Harwich when you come off the highway, is Jersey barriers. Who's liable if somebody falls off of that platform and into the street? Will it be the town or will it be the SEAL? Because what you're talking about is alcohol being served out there in the street. And when we walk our dogs down the middle of Harwich Center, is it legal and by the health board, okay for me to walk my dogs through the center, which is actually through a restaurant? And I think if I heard the beginning of this meeting correctly, I mean, this grant that we were to be given, the winter shared street project, was to help everybody through COVID. What you're doing is you're hindering all of our businesses except for the SEAL and making it very difficult for any of them to come through and to purchase things. You've got the SEAL putting their, if they're not against it, because I'm hearing that the CDC is lifting this, which means this is going to be a mute point, they won't be able to serve outside, and they won't be able to serve in the street. And therefore, why is the town going to the expense of painting the streets within the town taxpayers are going to pay to repaint them?
Thank you, Lane. Joe, I guess I'll refer this to you. She raises some, I think, interesting points. What happens if it's delayed until we get more direction from the governor?
Mr. Chair.
Well, let Joe answer this in.
I don't believe the last statement is accurate, meaning the local licensing authority has not expanded service to the sidewalk. My understanding is the service is contained to the licensed establishment, which includes their outside area, AKA their current deck. I'm not aware of any effort to extend that out into the roadway or the sidewalk generally. And if that were to happen, it would have to come back before this board. And then the other comments about the timing, I think, are accurate. So I can't speak beyond that because I don't believe the statement was correct, and I also don't know to which plans the previous speaker was talking about. I do know, working with the town engineer and others, that the plans have been slightly changed to impact upon traffic calming on the north side of the street, as Selectman McManus has indicated. But beyond that, I'm not aware of any major changes to the plans.
Okay. We, yeah, we really can't take, it's not on our agenda, so we can't take a formal action tonight.
You weren't very aware of it because we had what was called a fact-finding meeting. You were supposed to bring all those facts back to the Selectmen. That was two and a half weeks ago. You've chosen not to respond to my emails. And so I don't know where the fact-finding, because clearly the Selectmen were not given it. If you look at the plans, and I'm not sure the Selectmen have all seen them, it's very clear that there is seating out in front of the SEAL in the street. And you and I spoke about that at our fact-finding meeting.
The board has not been presented with any applications to expand seating out to the sidewalk at present. If it was contemplated in prior designs, that would be prior designs. But there is no service of alcohol beyond the deck.
And that's why it would come to our attention, because that's the change in the license. Michael, you've.
Mr. Chair, I would just say that this is public comment and announcement. This is not an agenda item. And I would ask that we bring it back on the 24th for further conversation. And in that meeting, I would suggest that we have some actual plans of what is taking place so that we can review actual plans. But I would ask that we end this discussion because it's not.
May I ask a question based on that to the board, please?
Go ahead, Lane.
In terms, no, sorry, this is Lucy Bracken. I'm a Harwich Center resident, and I also am very aware of the, you know, parking constraints and neighbor concern based on businesses, because I've been through it personally, and I happen to live in Harwich Center. In terms of the postponement of until the 24th, would that be like the work being continued? Because Mr. McManus did say that if the work didn't tend to work out, it could be undone with taxpayers' money. So would that mean that the work would be further continued tomorrow, or would the work be halted until the 24th? Because I know there are a lot of concerned Harwich Center residents, and I know how strongly the board takes surrounding neighbors of, you know, businesses and, you know, concerns, neighborly concerns.
Ed, what is our?
Just in terms of that production, because I know there was a lot of work going on in Harwich Center today. So if it is, you know, postponed until the 24th, would that mean that the work would be underway for, you know, a further week, which is thousands and thousands of dollars? I know this grant was like, I believe, $100,000 based on the Harwich Center, you know, project, and it's underway. And so the 24th would just be, you know, a lot of money and a lot of sleepless nights for those Harwich Center business owners.
Ed, I think the grant was, what was the value of the grant? I thought it was.
$142,000.
$142,000, okay.
And the work that's going on today, tomorrow, and Wednesday are the handicap ramps. And at this point, if you leave them, if you stop work on them now, you basically will leave the center in a state of not being passable. I mean.
Which I understand, because I live and own in Harwich Center, and I, you know, as a business owner in Harwich for Memorial Day Weekend coming up and people coming off the 10, I know that there's a lot of concern about this project, and I don't know if it has been clearly spelled out. I know, based on the Harwich Center businesses, it doesn't seem to be like there was a lot of knowledge on this major grant that seems to only affect one spot in Harwich Center.
I think the immediate question is, can we bring this back to the 24th? And what's the ramifications of that?
In terms of the taxpayers' money, in terms of like if further work was done and then that work had to be undone prior, you know, after the 24th, how much would that cost the taxpayers?
There's no cost to the taxpayers.
I would suggest that we go ahead with.
We can't go through this again.
That have already been done.
We had a question from another Selectman. I'd like for Selectman McManus to answer that.
Well, the ramifications, you can bring it back on next Monday. But I think the handicap ramp portion of the project, I think, is a very desirable thing to finish up. I mean, we're not at this point going to tear out all the concrete. The ramps that they've put in and reinstall the asphalt sidewalk in its place. I mean, that would just be silly. And those were, and those were the only real permanent parts of the project, were the installation of the handicap ramps.
Okay. I think, I think that's where we are.
I would agree with him as far as the handicap ramps and the getting things level, and let's then readdress it.
We'll bring this back on our next meeting, and I think that's the meat of the discussion anyway. That's when we started talking more about parking issues.
I think Jenny wanted.
Jenny? You have a comment as well?
Hi, yes, this is Jane Hewitt. I'm the library director and a Harwich Center resident. I just wanted to make sure that regardless of what happens, you know, with the parking spaces and the barriers at the other end of Harwich Center, I hope that all of the striping and narrowing of the corners at the Oak Street intersection, at the Bank Street intersection, that those changes can still go forward. My concern is if you wait, you think everything but the curb cuts waits until after your meeting next week, that doesn't leave much time before the end of May, when all the work has to be done.
Okay, thank you, Jenny.
And I think it's too valuable a project to lose as far as the traffic calming and pedestrian safety.
It was a discussion. We'll bring it back as an update on Monday.
May I say a quick thing?
Who's speaking?
Peter Moore, owner of Ruggies. This grant was in order to help businesses and promote safety during COVID times. And since the governor's announcement of the removal of the COVID regulations, I don't feel this project should move forward, and I feel that the grant money isn't going to what it was intended to be used for. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will bring this back as an agenda item next meeting.
No.
Ed? You wish to? There's no other, we'll move on to new business?
Public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, there's a public hearing that requires.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
An opening and a continuation.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to open the public hearing that was originally posted for Monday, May 3rd, and continued until tonight. And the intent is to open it by reading the advertisement and then to immediately close it. So, Mr. Chair, I move that we open the public hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws as amended that application has been made to this board for a transfer of seasonal on-premise all-alcoholic beverage license now held by Phoenix Park LLC, DBA The Cape Cod Irish Pub, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Brandon O'Reilly, manager, to Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC, DBA The Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Thomas Paulini, manager, on the following described premises located at 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Two-story wood-framed structure with nine rooms on first floor, including dining room and lounge, five rooms on the upper floor, cellar for storage with rear entrances and exits on easterly side of building, and one entrance and exit on the rear existing outdoor deck. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the application on Monday, May 3rd, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 p.m., remotely via go-to meeting, at which time all interested parties are cordially invited to dial in. Board of Selectmen, Local Licensing Authority, advertise Cape Cod Times, April 15, 2021.
The second?
Second.
I'll take a roll. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We did get a memo today asking for continuance. Joe, do you know that's, they have a date certain?
We can't discuss anything other than another motion to continue.
Okay. Well, I was just giving some background that they've asked for a recent.
So Mr. Paulini has indicated last week that he has been following up. As you may recall, previously, he had not finished his food service permit and building. So we're hopeful that his paperwork and work will be completed so the board could contemplate this for May 24th. I know that the applicant has expressed a desire to open for Memorial Day, but that would not have been the case even based on the original hearing date, given that it takes anywhere from five to seven weeks for the state to go through their processes.
So my question was, if we continue it, is there a date that he's looking forward to?
We could endeavor for the 24th.
Okay. Michael?
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we close said public hearing.
Second.
Okay, take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
And then, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue public hearing date to a date certain of May 24th, no earlier than 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Yes. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Was the intention of closing for the purpose of a continuing?
Yes.
And I just wanted to make that clear, that the original notice still stands, we're not going to have to renotice, et cetera. Thank you.
We'll move in seconds. Any discussion? Now I'll take a roll. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
That will go to new business.
Under new business, you'll see in your packet that there's discussion and possible vote regarding Coastal Resilience Grant Program for fiscal year 2022, and this relates specifically to the Lothrav Water Main Improvements. I believe we have Russ Cleecamp from GHD, who is assisting our water, wastewater superintendent with the application. And Mr. Chairman, I would like to gladly hand it over to Russ.
Hi, Russ. Hi, Russ.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board and Mr. Powers. Thanks for having me to, to talk tonight on behalf of Mr. Pelletier. I understand he's on a flight back right now. But what this project is, is, you know, we've been working with Dan on some of the wastewater items. And generally, when grants are advertised for the state, especially ones like this one, is the Coastal Resiliency Program, they're really good grants to go after. And I asked Dan, I said, do you have any projects with vulnerable infrastructure that, you know, maybe on the coastline or impacted by severe weather? And he brought to my attention the above-grade water main on Lothrav Avenue. So really, what this grant application is for is for the state to help fund the final design and permitting of relocating this main underground. It would likely be directional drilled. It's in a, you know, wetland area. As a bonus to the project, we get to do some habitat restoration, the salt marsh where the main is running through would be restored. So we feel it's a very competitive application. And the numbers behind the application, the overall project cost is $91,000. However, 75% of that is funded through the grant, which is approximately $69,000. The in-kind services by Dan and his staff total roughly $11,000. So the only cash that the town would have to expend is roughly $12,000 for the final design and permitting of the water main relocation. If successful, we would pursue either this funding program or the MVP funding program to help with construction funds. Both of these grants offer up to a million for the Coastal Resiliency, I believe 2 million for the MVP for construction projects. So, you know, while it's expensive to directional drill, if we can get 75% of it funded, it makes it much more palatable for the water department. So with that, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Russ? Michael?
What do we need to do to give him approval to go ahead?
So it would be the intent tonight that the board vote to accept the draft language that was in your packet, recognizing that there's a scrivviness omission. So there's one letter that needs to be added to the word please. And then the board could sign it tomorrow and we could release it.
So moved.
I'll second.
Just one comment. I do, Joe, appreciate that we have the, the value of the grant to do the work and that we've actually, and the in-house charge. So we have indirect expense of our own labor involved in this as well. So, thank you.
Sure. Our pleasure. And Russ, I hope you heard what I said about the quick change and we'll get that signed by the board members starting tomorrow if approved.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a vote in a second, motion in a second. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye. We have.
Thank you.
Joe, you want to start this discussion?
I do. I want to start it by turning it right over to our Director of Public Works to work through the memorandum that's in your packet regarding disposal fee, disposal area fee recommendations for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. You have before you a memo from me recommending a fee increase of $25 for the residential, residential, you don't call them stickers, I mean, residential permit and $25 for the non-residential permit, which would move the prices to 185 and 225 respectively. Last year, I made the same recommendation, nearly the same recommendation. And that was based on the fact that on January 1st, 2020, the town entered into new solid waste contracts that increased the town's disposal cost from $60 per ton to $90 per ton. Now that is 93 and change in 94 with the two different vendors. A simple way to look at the cost impact of the resident is a DEP considers the average residential, the average residence produce approximately 1.25 tons of MSW, the Admissible Solid Waste per year. If you apply the math to that, that's approximately $37 per ton. It's increased. I'm recommending a $25 increase to remain in a full cost recovery model that we have been in for about the last 15 years. That is, the disposal area user fees cover the cost, the operational cost. And that includes direct costs and indirect costs that are all in a couple of spreadsheets that are included in this memo. One final point, we changed action to COVID back last March to a single stream recycling model. That is, one can put all of their recyclables into one container. That has worked out remarkably well. However, that convenience comes at a cost. The cost is $105 per ton. And amortized out over a year, that's about $110,000 annually, along with about $50,000 in cycling revenue. When we instituted that single stream model, we were very clear that that was a temporary measure. And we will return to a source separated model where the residents put their various recyclables in different receptacles and we ensure the quality of that and usually get paid for most of it. Believe it or not, the recycling markets have come back right now and they're very cyclical in nature. Bring that up because no doubt there are people that are used to this model now and are going to be surprised and not happy with the change returning to the previous or separated recycling that we've had for years. On the flip side, we have been asked by many residents when we were going to go back. I think there is a segment of the population that actually enjoys the recycling. Again, I bring that up because I, I think I want to talk about it with the board and if appropriate, to reaffirm that plan. That includes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Ed?
Link, you indicated the single stream was running as 110,000 a year?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
If we go back to.
Well, plus the loss, excuse me.
We go back to a source separated model, what would the cost? Go ahead.
Well, it's about, the net impact is about $160,000 a year. I'm estimating about, we lose about $50,000, $50,000 in recycle revenue from using this model. And we've been paying about 110 annualized. I would like to point out that we have not had to go, we've not had to come back and address this because the CARES funding has covered our tip fee for the single stream recycling. So it has not, we've not experienced a real financial impact other than the loss of revenue. Quite frankly, the recycling markets were in the tubes mostly over the last year. So we really didn't lose out it much. But I think we ought to go back to the source separated model, at least when the pandemic is officially over, which appears maybe on June 15th.
Go ahead. So the CARES Act funding for the single stream though, when does that end?
I've been in discussions with Carol, the Finance Director, over this. She's not able to tell me definitively, but it would most certainly be before the end of the year, yeah, the end of the calendar year.
So at, at some point, that cost is going to come back to us.
Yes, sir.
Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, my only comment, Lincoln, I'm sure it won't come as a surprise to you. I don't think that we should be raising the taxpayers' fee by 15, 15-plus percent right now. And I would, I would argue that I think we should be raising the commercial MSW rate. And, and I did see your notes about who our competitors are on C and D. And, and I appreciate the volume of the dump and how well the dump is run. But I think we should be doing everything and anything we can do to reduce rates to the residents and make the commercial haulers pay the difference. So I, I would support the non-resident increase, but I cannot support a 15% increase to our residents.
Link, I had a related question to that. Michael, if I may. What's, I questioned the C and D rate, a little bit different perspectives. You're keeping that lower because of competition. Why, why are we, I guess that's a business decision, but why is, why are you treating it that way and keeping it low based on, because we offer a great service here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The town of Yarmouth is the only other town that I'm aware of, or they only have a place on Cape Cod, besides the two private entities that were listed in the bottom of a memo, that accepts commercial quantities of this. Their rate is 145. We went to 155 last year. And quite frankly, you know, we could go up, we could go up on that. And I don't think it would hinder the volume one iota. Building has been remarkably busy. I usually look at solid waste as leading economic indicators. And I have to tell you, the, the C and D, we are at about our permit limit. We really can't handle it anymore. So, you know, if the board had a palette for that, you could certainly cover the recommendation with a $10 increase would yield, you know, about that $110,000 I recommended to raise for the residents.
I like that.
If you want to, I'll make a motion. I move that we leave the residential sticker at its current price and that we raise the C and D price from 155 a ton to 165 a ton. And I'll leave it at that.
Increase the non-resident sticker fee from 200 to 225?
Sure.
I'll second that.
Don?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Link, that accomplishes, it's a net neutral mathematic equation then?
Thank you, Mike. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Other comments? Well, let's take a, I'll take a hold on that, then we'll come back to the single stream. Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don? And I'm an aye. Ed's made a case, I, it seems to me the right thing to do is go back to the letting people sort. Do we need a, entertain a motion on that so we send a clear message? Ed?
Somebody have a.
Yeah, I don't know that you can operate under that notice. I think you have to renotice that specifically on the single stream because it was only for the disposal area fees. And as I understood it, it's essentially a policy vote to resume single stream. Is that?
Okay, Michael?
We, I don't think we need to make any action. I think the last action was taken by the DPW Director. And I think he can take this action if we give him the consensus of the board that we want to go back to that.
Sort of separate.
Right, Joe?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Don, you okay with that? You have a question?
I'm not only okay with that, but I find myself not recycling as much because I'm using a private recycler. What they will accept in mixed recycling material is nowhere near what I was able to do with source separation.
Right. I think it's clear, Link, you have a consensus to move back to that when we can.
May I ask, do you like the June 15th date on that? Or is there some other date the board would like us to entertain?
I would go with June 15th so we're consistent.
Sure. Yep. As long as it fits within whatever the governor decides to do.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2021 Junk Dealer License Renewal for Windsong Antiques, Inc., 346 Route 28.
Second.
Joe, any comments on this?
No, the pretty self-explanatory in the packet.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm aye. We, Joe, you want to walk us through what the procedure is for a special election?
As you recall, I had raised the concept of special election to be contemplated by the board sometime. Board's directive was to follow up with a memo and dates on the procedures. So as you'll see in your packet, the clerk has informed me of the different dates that would apply. So once the board puts notice on and sets a date for the election, the clerk will then create that calendar based on the dates in the memorandum attachment. So at this point, it would really be the board indicating when you would want to have a date conversation noticed on a meeting. Unless you had questions on the process.
I think we could notice it for next week, but it's not noticed now for votes.
No, no, this, this bring it back for vote next week. But, Joe, just, if I look at the calendar, when, when could we have a special election? I didn't go through the math on that.
Not to speak for our town clerk, but I would say, generally speaking, if you gave yourself about 60 days from when you declared the election to when the election occurred, if you look at the legal requirements for the clerk, that may be sufficient. So then, of course, it just brings up the comment of what, what does 60 days leave you on the calendar?
Right.
But generally speaking, if you were calling a special election, because we're so far in advance of the regular election, you want to give yourself roughly 60 days time.
Okay.
Or I should say, give the clerk 60 days.
Give the clerk. So if we vote next week, we could start the action, it'd be two months after that. So we're talking in.
Or be the earliest.
Be the earliest, but we may. Excuse me, Ed?
Yeah, I, you know, I had hoped to be able to vote for this, getting the, the process started before ending the term.
That's my fault. I missed that.
Yeah, ending my term on the board. But I, you know, I'd just like to urge you to not hold this up any longer than it needs to be, given that we'll be looking at, apparently looking on any number of levels, having a special town meeting in the fall. It would be nice to, one, have a full crew of five for that meeting and to have enough time for the new person to get up to speed, understand how things are done and be prepared to participate actively in, in the creation of that special town meeting and advocating for whatever the issues are.
Okay, we'll bring it back.
So it looks like, and, and I would just assume if we bring it back next week, not to, not to prolong it any longer, maybe, maybe it comes back with some suggested dates that work for the town clerk. But it, it appears that July 19th would be the earliest that we could have an election. And I do agree with Ed that we need to fill this.
As soon as we can, yeah.
As soon as we can, so.
Yeah.
19th, 26th, or then we get into August. So if we could come back with dates, two proposed dates, maybe, then we can just make sure work of this.
Because that was my question last week, was coming back with dates. And I apologize, Ed, I, I missed that when I reviewed the agenda. I, I intended to have discussion and vote with a date on it tonight and, and I missed it.
We'll count, I'll count Ed's vote when we vote.
Pardon?
I'll count Ed's vote when we vote.
I'll vote in spirit.
Well, just, yeah, thank you for bringing it forward again.
Yeah. Joe, we have a discussion on the, you're going to meet with the liquor license?
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, if I could, and with apologies to Deputy Chief Considine, who's been waiting patiently, he and I were prepared to speak to this topic this evening. However, obviously, in relation to what Governor Baker has announced today, I would rather hold off on that because now we can contemplate a broader meeting, a meeting in person and a meeting with better direction and guidance from the ABCC. So at this point, I'd like to hold off on that topic for this evening.
Okay, we have a.
I'll certainly follow up with the police department.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, Michael, you wish to?
I do. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for March 22nd, 2021, and April 20th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And we have a presentation from Library Director, Jenny. She's still.
What?
Yep.
You got me.
Yep. We saw your news.
Thank you, I keep turning my camera on and off, because it's not working fast enough. Thank you. Good evening. I realize this is a belated announcement, since the library resumed allowing patrons inside today, but it's still a good chance to provide information to you and to the public on our plans for this phase. Our initial open hours will be Monday to Thursday, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. So, this is counter to the daytime-only hours or the weekend-only schedule that many libraries have chosen in their shortened reopening schedules, but we feel it's important that families with school-aged children and people who work during the day aren't excluded. So, we deliberately chose hours that are later in the day. Everyone should have the opportunity to come in and use the library. So, if all goes well, we expand, we plan to expand the Monday to Thursday hours, so that our summer schedule will be Monday to Thursday, 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday, 10:00 to 4:00. And we're looking to return to our normal schedule of 10:00 a.m. openings in the fall, perhaps sooner, you know, with the news today. But right now, that's our plan for the summer. We're asking patrons to limit their visits to 15 minutes. While that's not ideal, the idea is to emphasize that these are intended to be quick, grab-and-go visits. By having short visits, we hope to avoid needing to implement an appointment system, which are really unpopular with patrons. It's just not how people live their lives. And with a faster turnover, we should avoid having to establish any occupancy limits or having lines of people waiting to enter. Right now, we are requiring masks to come inside regardless of vaccination status. That's because so many people have not yet had the opportunity to be vaccinated, and just to try to keep everyone safe. Unlike last fall, both the children's room and the first floor and second floor will be open, so patrons will have full access to the entire collection. The public computers are available, and we have Chromebooks and hotspots that can be checked out and to take home. We have, Storytime is going to meet on Thursday mornings in Brooks Park, starting in June, and our Nettlet will meet, which meets on Wednesdays, will also meet outdoors at Brooks Park on Wednesdays this summer. But other programs will remain online at this time, you know, probably for the summer. We will continue to offer scheduled curbside pickup Monday through Saturday for people who don't want to come in or who aren't wearing, can't or won't, don't want to wear a mask. So, patrons can give us a call, it's 508-430-7562, to schedule their pickup day, and we then check out the items to them, bag them up, label them, and they're left outside in that curbside pickup area for any time after 10:00 p.m. until closing time. Let's see, our Friends Book Sale is not yet operational, so we're not able to accept donations. I know people would really like to get rid of the old books. What was I going to say? The other thing, I just want to say, our full plan for reopening is on the, in the packet for tonight's meeting, and it's also on our webpage. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Jenny. I did appreciate, you gave us a full document in our packet, so that was well done. We're, it's nice to be informed. Any questions or comments for Jenny?
I have none, just thank you, Jenny.
Don?
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, through the years, this has always been the case, but particularly in COVID. I mean, the library has been the most resilient organization we have in terms of wanting to be there for the public, and it was really important when, in the darkest days, if people just had to stay home, for them to have not just the books, but the innovative things, like the subscriptions that they have, that they shared for newspapers. I mean, it's incredible about the efforts that the library took to keep the community knitted together during those times.
It was a heartbreaking summer last summer, just, I mean, we were quite happy to be doing curbside again, you know, after being shut down for 13 weeks, but it was still a heartbreaking summer, not a normal summer. And even now, you know, the curbside service is free, but it's like running a small fulfillment center, like Amazon or, you know, some other online retailer, and that's not what being a library is all about. So, we're really excited to have people back in, and people were quite happy to come in today. You know, we did get more people during the 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock hour, but, you know, not too many, and overall, it was a beautiful day, so this is good. It wasn't overly crowded, but we had a total of 82 patrons come in, and I think people, the word is still getting out that we're, that we were open today. So, hopefully, we'll see more in the coming days.
Just know that we appreciate everything you do.
My only counter to that is, Jenny, that you, in the past, have become our chief engineer of keeping the library heating and air conditioning going, and now, as Don mentions, you're our chief of helping us go through COVID. I actually don't need another Act III on this.
I don't know about that. I'm very happy to turn all of the facilities maintenance over to Sean Levy. I thought that would be a clear highlight, having that, getting that position created and that function centralized, but I think that COVID is something we certainly never expected.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
We move on to contracts. Joel, do you have a comment on the first?
I would move and make a motion, if we can, for discussion. I just would ask for one clarification. Is it COMERS? Is that how we're, or is that an acronym for something?
I believe that's an acronym, but I'll defer to Chief LeBlanc on that.
Hi, Chief.
Hi, how are you? I'm going to be a completely honest with you. It is an acronym, and I can't tell you what it stands for. It's a state organization that has to do with the radio upgrades, and I could probably look it up real quick and tell you, but I don't have the exact words for it, but it is COMERS, is how it's pronounced.
COMERS. David, if you, if it's possible and you could look it up, it's, we're not supposed to use acronyms on our agendas. That's our mistake, not yours, but I think to give the public an accurate picture of what we're doing, it would be good to say what the acronym means. If you can't, we could bring back the announcement of that next week without holding up this vote, but I think it's important that the public knows what it is.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Interoperable Radio System.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, what, Don?
Interoperable Radio System.
Okay, I moved that the Board of Selectmen. Is that okay? We ready?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Chairman, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to execute the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, say it again, Don?
Interoperable.
Interoperable Radio System Radio Upgrade Grant Award for the Fire Department with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Technology Services and Security for $133,831.87.
Second.
Second. And Michael, you wanted some discussion on this?
I have no discussion. I don't need any.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Michael?
I'm an aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
Okay, I moved that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to execute the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Interoperable.
Interoperable Radiosys.
Radio Upgrade Grant Award for the Police Department with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Technology Services and Security for $163,023.79, as presented.
The only discussion I have is, I think we mentioned before, Chief, but great job, grant writing, to obtain these funds. It's greatly appreciated. I know this effort from you and your, and your people outside your normal scope of safety activities.
So, if you indulge me for a second, Mr. Chairman, so I'd like to give kudos to Deputy Thorne and Deputy Considine, who did yeoman's duty, basically cataloging every single radio that we have, so that we could, we could get credit for the radios that we're using and reduce the cost of the town. The second thing that, I'm not sure everybody realizes, but between this grant and what we voted last Saturday at town meeting, the entire radio upgrade for the town will be taken care of, which was actually in the capital plan for $200,000 a year over five years. So, we did a million dollars worth of radio work in one year, with a vast majority of it being paid for by the Commonwealth. So, huge kudos to both deputies for their efforts in getting this done, and we're in good shape going forward to have radios for public safety into the future as the system gets upgraded.
Thank you, David. Kevin, you wish to, I'd like to hear from you as well.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Fire Chief's very humble. He did a lot of work on the front side of this, and we just appreciate his efforts to get both of us on board, and desperately needed radios are coming, so that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion in a second, so a vote. Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Thanks again. Next on your agenda is Town Administrator's Report. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Two quick items. First, we received notice from the Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, that they're building six homes on Murray Lane in Harwich. So, they are doing a virtual community kickoff next Monday, May 24, at 4:00 p.m. There's information on our website and on their page for the link. I know I'll be participating on that. Certainly, everyone's welcome to participate in the virtual kickoff, and they're also still looking for volunteers as they go forward in the program, and perhaps ease of restrictions going forward. So, we have information in the packet and information on the website, but just wanted to make that announcement, that Habitat for Humanity is getting underway on the six homes on Murray Lane.
Okay, Don?
Even though it's virtual, might I recommend, just in case three selectmen want to sit in there, that we notice it?
Sure.
Okay, good.
And then last, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to first personally thank Mr., excuse me, Selectman McManus. You'll be Mr. tomorrow, but tonight you're Selectman. For your, for your service on the board, that's a personal statement, and also personally and professionally, for your support, your guidance, and your help on continuing to learn all things Harwich. So, I appreciate that, and I wish you every success going forward.
Let me move to you, Ed, and give you a chance to, I can't believe your time's up already.
Well, I don't know really exactly what to say. It's been, I think, a very rewarding experience for me, and I hope for the town. We, I think, we're, I was involved in doing some very nice things here in the town. A number of building projects, the, starting with the complete rebuild of the front facade of the Brooks Academy Museum in 2004, the building of the police station, and most, especially our Montmorey Regional High School, which I think has turned into a real asset for the town going forward. I also, you know, since first elected, I jumped in on a project that had actually been going on for many years before, and that's the whole issue of wastewater planning, with the initial group of water sampling volunteers organized by Heinz Proft and Frank Sampson, to where we are now, with a plan that got us started and also anticipated making changes as we move along, as the information and data that we collect change our focus. I just hope we continue to give it the level of attention that it has always had at the Board of Selectmen and at town meetings, and that we keep on with that effort, because our water lens that we sit on and our ponds and estuaries and beaches are our biggest asset here on Cape Cod, and we need to protect them, and most importantly, with the coastal areas, enhance them for future generations. I want to thank all of you, and all the other Selectmen that I've served with, and all of the town employees, which I think I found to be overwhelmingly a stellar group of public servants. I remember the way the town responded in that blizzard we had that buried the town. Not only did the Public Works Department, but all the other departments did their bit to get, dig us out, and our, some of our local private contractors pitched in where they could. So, it's, all in all, it's been a tremendous experience for me, and as Joe indicated, you know, I've tried to sort of fill him in on the background of issues that he's brand-new to, and I, having lived a lot of it, if you ever have a question about when and why we did something 10 years ago, I can probably be helpful in providing an answer for that, and we'll be happy to do so, so.
Thank you, Ed. It's been a joy meeting with you. Just to, to be concise, you're not leaving Harwich, you're still around.
Oh, yeah.
You'll still be around for activities.
Yeah, I just, I would add my thanks, Ed. It's been a pleasure serving with you, and as Larry just mentioned, I'm sure we're going to see you on that side of the table plenty. There's still plenty of issues going on that I'm quite certain that you're going to chime in on, so.
Yep. Thank you.
But pleasure, and thank you.
Don?
Kind of feel like we're at Ed's wake here or something.
That's what I wanted to say, you're still around.
I just wanted to basically wish Ed the best in whatever happens in the future.
Well, we'll know tomorrow, for one.
We've been back and forth for 20 years.
You know, it's about 20, maybe 26 hours from now, we'll see. What'll be happening, so.
Thank you. Don, anything else?
Good luck again.
Good luck again. Michael?
Selectman's report?
Yep.
Is that where we are?
That's where we're at.
That's where we're at.
I would, I would just ask of administration that prior to next week's meeting, the 24th, that we can receive as much ahead of time on the Harwich Center plans as possible. I would also encourage, through emails, that I know, Joe, you've gotten, and I'll forward a few that I've gotten, through the emails, maybe we could try and work with some of these, some of the concerns related to the striping and the parking. I think some legitimate concerns were brought up, but one legitimate concern, which has been talked about for 20 years, is the congestion and the ability to drive through Harwich Center when the big trucks are coming through and smacking mirrors and cars on the side of the road. So, this isn't new. Some people think it's new, but this Harwich Center has been talked about, and Stephen Ford was on the committee with a, with a group of residents for rebuilding Harwich Center. So, there's been a lot of ideas and a lot of things thrown around over 20 years. So, if we could get something done, this is money that's a grant, not taxpayers' money that was alluded to four or five times from somebody tonight. It is a grant. We have to spend this grant. Whatever we don't spend, we have to give back. So, this is a break to the taxpayers, and I think that as much as we can possibly work together this week to try and figure out some solutions on some of the concerns, I think it's important. Parking is definitely important, and it's important to me. I think these businesses need as much parking as possible. But we do have to make some sort of change, and widening the street is not, not an issue. As for the rumors, allegations, whatever you want to call them, about us creating a deck for the SEAL Pub, Governor's orders have been very specific about when they're lifting the state of emergency. There is no plan filed with the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, or anyone else related to deck service in Harwich Center, so that rumor needs to go away. And if that's ever applied for, there will be obviously a public hearing on that, because it's a change of a liquor license. But I would encourage everybody to work, try and work together, and as Ginny Hewitt said, to kill the whole project makes absolutely no sense, and Ginny has done a tremendous amount of work and also expressed concern about people crossing the crosswalk up by her, and there really is some, some big issues here that we have to address. So, the point is, the more we can get ahead of time, and the more we can accomplish ahead of time, you know, maybe we can eliminate some of the rock throwing from Hingham, you know. It's just something that we don't need, and we need to try and move forward and get something done.
Yeah. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm possibly the only one sitting at this table who was actually winged trying to cross the street, go into the library a number of years ago, where I got hit. So, I.
I'm glad that's at the club, I'm not.
I am absolutely in favor of safety for there. But since Michael hasn't mentioned it, we have met a few times over Hall's path, and we are still fact-finding over what's going on, and anticipate that we'll eventually, when we know who has property there and what can be done about the road. and what can be done about the road, we'll report back.
Good, because I suggested that for agenda item tonight, it wasn't ready.
A little premature.
Yeah. Ed?
Yeah, you know, I would just encourage you to do what Michael said and try and work out something. You know, the issue of, when I first got involved in 2002 with the Harwich Center Initiative, and I'll remember Betty Schneiderhand, the issue of removing parking from one side of the street came up, and everybody poo-pooed it. But one of the persons, people that was very much in favor of it is Chris Nickerson of the Highway Department, because he was always concerned about the, the substandard width of those lanes, traffic lanes we have there and the essentially potential liability if we wind up with a serious accident and injury that the town would face, knowing that we've been maintaining that all along, you know. We've been lucky that it, nothing's, other than a bump or lost a rearview mirror has happened thus far. But there's been some side swipes, which could have been tragic if the wrong person had been in the wrong place at the wrong time. And so I'd urge, urge us to continue to move ahead.
Well, I think as clear as we all said, we can't live with the status quo at this point. We have some money to try to improve the situation, so. But we need more discussions, but.
You all done, Larry?
I move adjourn.
Done, yeah.
Second.
Excuse me, before we do that, Joe has a comment?
If I may, we sort of danced around it, but Tuesday, May 18th is the annual town election.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Falls Roaden from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center at 100 Oak Street.
That's tomorrow.
That is tomorrow.
Regular hours.
And I shall be there to vote.
Yeah, still second my motion to adjourn.
Is it second?
Yep.
Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye.